Hello and welcome to Loudoun County Public Libraries Female Leadership Speaker Series. March is Women's History Month, and we are proud to present a series this spring to celebrate the achievements of local women in leadership positions. My name is Suzanne Engelhardt, and I work at Sterling Library. For all the first live conversation in this series, I'm delighted to welcome a true leader of Loudoun County, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Phyllis Wendell. Welcome Chair Wendell, and thank you for sitting down with us.
Well, thank you for having me, and thank you for your work in the libraries, and thanks for everybody on this call. And I'm gonna say what I always say this year is, I hope everyone's doing well, and I hope everyone's staying healthy. It's been a tough year, but we see a light at the end of the tunnel. So just keep, keep wearing your mask, keep social distancing, stay healthy, and we're gonna get through this.
Very important and inspirational words right here at the beginning, so thank you for that, and I wholeheartedly agree Chair Wendell. Before we start with the questions I have for you today, let me just say a few words about the Board of Supervisors and your view as well. So the work of the Board of Supervisors impacts our lives in large and small ways. The Board establishes county government policy and passes resolutions and ordinances. It approves the county budget, and then deals plans makes appointments to various positions, and works with the state and federal government to get the best outcomes for our region. It allocates money and resources to provide funding for schools, parks, libraries, public safety and other essential services to make this community a great place to live and work. Most of you will probably know that Phyllis Wendell is in her second term as Chair of the Board, after being re-elected with a vast majority of votes in November 2019. However, she has served our community for much longer than that. First by volunteering at her son's schools, and then by being appointed Citizen Representative of Virginia's Fair Housing Board, which she eventually also chaired. In 2015, she made history when she was the first African-American woman in Virginia's history to be elected to chair the County Board of Supervisors. Her deep commitment to our community and her leadership ability are reflected in the fact that she has been voted favorite public official by the residents of Loudoun County for three years in a row. Today, she is here to talk about leadership and share her experience and advice with us. So Chair Wendell, it's a pleasure to have you as a guest today.
Thank you Susan, and I really appreciate that. That was very kind of you.
Alright, let's get started with the questions. Since you became Chair, the Board of Supervisors has successfully completed an impressive number of projects, ranging from meeting community needs to strategic planning of economic development, growth, and transportation. Can you talk about one or two projects that improve the quality of life here in Loudoun County that you are especially proud of since you began your chairwomanship?
Sure, I can, and thank you. So by profession, I'm a mental health therapist, and my emphasis area was substance abuse, and I worked for years with offender populations in jails and prisons. And so whenever you are elected to an office or you come into something new, you bring with you your whole history and the things that are really important to you. And when I arrived, one of the things I learned is that although we have been doing a pretty good job in Loudoun, building roads, building schools, doing a lot with our Economic Development Department, we had vastly underfunded our Behavioral and Community Health Department. Our, in Loudoun County, our Family Services Department had the highest case loads in Virginia when I arrived in 2016, and I was just really disturbed and shocked by that. So one thing that I decided that needed to happen was we needed to put positions in our Mental Health and Behavioral Health Departments, in Family Services and Substance Abuse, and also put a lot more emphasis and help to our nonprofits, because our nonprofits really sometimes, when government can't do everything and government shouldn't do everything, our nonprofits will step in the breach and do some of that work. And so I put a half million dollars more in our nonprofits, and we have hired just in one department alone, the Mental Health, Substance Abuse, and Behavioral Health Services, over fifty positions in one term, in one four years, because they were that understaffed, and so I was really happy about that because it needed to happen. Also, we did not have, and we still don't have, great bus services in Loudoun County, so I'm really working to put more buses in Loudoun County and more bus routes, because Loudoun is a fairly affluent county, people think that everyone has cars, everyone can get around. We don't. There are some people who don't have cars, or they have one car and a, and the family of four people, and so we need more bus routes and bus services. So I, I've been very focused on not so much transportation, but transit to get people around if they don't have vehicles. And finally, housing. Loudoun County has not been in the past a place that was, you know, really welcome, a continuum of housing. So people for low-income housing, affordable housing, veterans' housing, disability housing, senior housing, all those things. Now, you cannot be a county that grows as fast as Loudoun and not think you need more houses. You do. We need houses in Loudoun County. We need them in the right locations and the right types of houses. They don't belong everywhere, but we definitely need more houses. And so the work I've done to bring a continuum of housing in Loudoun County, affordable housing and workforce housing, that's been, I think, really important in Loudoun County. Affordable housing is our teachers and our firefighters, our sheriff's deputies, our nurses, and we, we want a county where the people who work in the county can live in the county as well. So those are some of the things that I'm, that I'm pleased and have taken place in the past five to six years.
Yeah, those are definitely some very important projects. The Transit, of course, there's also the Metro Line that's about to have. And there was a meeting just two weeks ago, and they were talking about new bus routes for that as well. So it's really a big picture that you need to keep in mind here. And since you already brought up your background as a mental health therapist, I figured that this is very close to you. In fact, I think you said when you started as Chair, apart from not being there, not having a lot of services or being kind of understaffed, you also said there was almost no discussion around the importance of strong behavioral health and mental health. And part of your goal has actually been to put new language into the county's lexicon. And I think you've actually achieved it, making that a priority.
Well, thank you. That, that means a lot, because that's important. I always say all the time, mental health is health, and there's such a stigma on mental health that people don't talk about it. And I said that in, in Northern Virginia and in Loudoun, you kind of, if you're hurting, you have to hurt quietly. You can't hurt out loud, and that's not healthy. And so the stigma on mental health, on substance abuse, on behavioral health, I'm really trying to work with that and, and, and let people know that especially now, you know, if you need help, you have to ask for it, and there'll be people there, and there is, there is no, you know, it's, it's, it's health. And so just as you would break your arm and, and ask for help, or if you have diabetes, you ask for help. If you, if you need mental health services, then you just need mental health services. Let's, let's, let's get it out there and, and get it done. So that's been really, really important to me. And so, you know, I don't imagine that there's very often that a county board is all of a sudden chaired by a mental health therapist who worked in county government for over twenty years, but, but I am. I'm a mental health therapist, and I worked in county government for over twenty years. So I bring the, the understanding of a county government employee with me to this position.
That's a very important perspective, and like you said, you know, your experience really kind of defines what you're doing as well, yeah. Of course, there were other projects as well. Personally, I enjoy the Eastman around Route Seven every day. I really appreciate not to have to stop for traffic lights there everywhere, and then.
Traffic lights are a big deal.
Yes, definitely. And then, of course, the other one, during your chairwomanship, were two new libraries were opened, Bramleton and Sterling. So I just wanted to mention that as well, because that obviously is very needed.
And that's also really important, very needed and very important. People don't really realize now what libraries are, you know. Some people, you know, have, I got a lot of questions, like why do we need libraries? We have the internet. And I said, well, first of all, to me, there's something about holding a book in your hand, right? Turning pages, dog-eering pages when you, when you wanna get back to that page. I love, I love reading, and I like holding books. But libraries are also workstations, they're community centers. They're, they're much more than just where you check out books now, and so they're very important. And so I was happy to, you know, to, to support our library system. And, and I would say the library board has been fantastic. My, my, my friend who, Mark Miller, who was the past Chair of the Library Board, I would tell you, he used to call me all the time and say, you know, and say what the libraries needed. And, and if, we, we know, we hope that we've given the library support. I would also say that at the, a library in Algonkin, the, the teen center there, the Friday Night Teen Center, is like nothing you've ever seen before. I mean, there are so many kids who are coming to that teen, who are coming to that teen center and really enjoying themselves. And so it's really important as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there are a lot of programs now primarily online, but there are also some things where people can really still come here, and it's very, very important.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So let's talk a little bit more about a couple of other things. Women have been elected to all levels of political office in record numbers over the last few years, especially in the last two elections. So women are way more visible in leadership positions now. What do you attribute this to, and do you think this trend will continue?
That's such a good question. First of all, I do think the trend will continue. I certainly hope the trend continues. I think women, no matter which, which party or which of political beliefs are, I think we do bring something different to the table as mothers, as sisters, as wives. I think that women just in general are more willing to sit down and work things out. I think we bring a different type of empathy to the table. You know, women are often, the CEOs are their families, they're the ones that keep the checkbooks. They're the ones that, you know, take care of the children and the parents. And so those organizational skills we build, we, we build in and we bring to, to the table. So one, I think so, and two, I hope so. I also think that seeing women run for some of their higher offices in the land, the Hillary Clintons, Kamala Harris, Sarah Palin's, Carly Fiorina's, we see women who are running for, for President and Vice President, the highest offices in the land. It does make other women go, you know what, I can do this. I can, I can get in here, and I can do this. I can make a difference. And so I really do think that, that the glass ceilings, you know, you know, if not broken, we keep, we do keep putting cracks in those glass ceilings all the time. And, and it is, it's, it's harder as a woman. It's been my experience. But I would tell you, one thing that happened is, when I got elected, the day after my election, I got a phone call from a woman named Del Paula Myers. Del Myers was the first woman who was a Chair-at-Large in Loudoun County. She happens to be a Republican. She called me the day after, and she said, "Congratulations, and by the way, this is gonna be tough, and let me tell you why, and let me help you." And from that day to this, she has been such a huge, huge help to me. I can call her anytime, and she's helped me, and she said it's gonna be hard chairing a, chairing a board that's majority men, no matter what party you're from, and, and, and she was completely right. And she was just a huge help. And so I've also found that women are more willing to cross those political lines to be kind of a sisterhood of support to one another. We may not agree on the issues, but we agree on the fact that it's important to have a woman's voice in the room. And so they've been, so that's been really helpful.
Yeah, totally agree, and of course, it's really nice to hear that you do receive support from your predecessor more or less. So that's, that's wonderful, and even especially that it goes across party lines as well.
Yep.
Because ultimately, you know, the parties don't really matter that much. It's really.
Especially in local government, especially in local government, and land use and transportation and schools. You know, I say all the time, there are no hot lanes for Republicans that Democrats don't get to drive or vice versa. And so especially for local, for local politics and local policy, more importantly, your party, your party just doesn't, it's just not as impactful as, as it might be in Congress. And I think because of that, you can get more done. We get a lot done, yeah.
So you've already mentioned some female trailblazers. Would you consider one of them your role model, or do you have somebody who you especially admire, and why?
Well, the, the women that I admire the most and consider my role models are people you don't know, because it's my mother and my grandmother. I remember being a very young girl, and I grew up in Denver, Colorado, and so Denver's cold and snowy. And I remember my grandmother taking my hand and walking me to Park Hill Elementary Library to where we, where we voted, and it, I remember it being cold and terrible, and I didn't wanna do that. And we got back home, I remember Grandma sitting me down and telling me why I was voting, and that so many women and people of color had worked so that she had the right to vote, and why voting and being just involved in the system was so, so important. I come from a military family, and so my mother and father told us our entire lives that you have to find a way to give back. This is the best country in the world, but you have to give back. And one reason, one way you gave back was by getting involved in your community and voting. So my mother and my grandmother are probably my two largest role models, but you don't know their names. I also have people who I just look up to, people like Shirley Chisholm, Barbara Jordan, Carol Mosley Braun, just amazing women who were the first to run for offices. And I have mentors, and again, Del Paula Myers, Kate Hanley, Sharon Bolivar, Kathy Hutchins, people who came before me in this job, I use as my mentors. I say all the time that I realize that as a woman, and especially as a woman of color, I am blessed to sit in this seat, but I did not get here by myself. I got here because tens of thousands, maybe even millions of women fought for me to be able to, you know, sit in school buildings and drink at lunch, sit at lunch counters and drink from water fountains and vote. And they, they are the ones who made it possible for me to run for this position, and they're why I'm here. And so I owe them a huge debt of gratitude.
That's a beautiful tribute to the tradition of strong women in your family, of course, and absolutely right. I mean, there are so many people that we can learn from, and we should really kind of remember, you know, they came before us and kind of.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Like you said, get involved, voting. Very important, still, still today, maybe even more so than years past. You already kind of started talking about it, your parents instilled a strong sense of community and public service in you, so can you talk a little bit more about that? What sparked your passion, or how your parents guided you?
Yeah, so my father was in the military. He did three tours of combat duty, in fact. And so, you know, as a military child, when you move around a lot, you know, it's a lot of sacrifices. And the parent, my parents just said, this is, this is, this is how it is. You sacrifice for the country and for your community, this is how it goes, and so find ways to serve. And when I first moved to Loudoun County many years ago, I started a reading program at Sterling Elementary School with a group of third grade girls. I remember that program really well. The first book we ever read with the girls, I ever read with the girls, was a book called Roll the Thunder, Hear My Cry. And if you've never read it, pick it up and read it. It's a fantastic book. And then after I had kids, I got really involved in my kids' schools and their PTO and PTA. And let me just say, PTO, PTA, politics, that's the most cutthroat politics there is, is PTO, PTA, politics. But when I was there, and when I was a room mom, and when I was Chair of IMSA, I would hear people talk about our school system, talk about our educators in ways that I thought was a problem. And I thought that our school system was being underfunded to a degree that I thought was gonna be harmful. And so I got really involved first in the school system as a room parent, not really wanting to or thinking I would ever run for office, but one thing led to another. And I did end up running for the school board in 2003. I lost that race, but it really sparked my interest in really realizing that it's important to be involved in not just the complaining, but the policymaking. You had to be in there when the sausage is made. And so, you know, I would go before the school board and for the, and before the Board of Supervisors and speak about things that I was really passionate about, education being one of them. And I just wasn't feeling like I was being heard, you know, that my voice was being, my voice was traveling. I remember one time, I won't say who it was, but a member of the Board of Supervisors actually said that the only time the voice of the people matter is on Election Day. And I was just appalled by that statement and thought, I don't think that's right. I don't think that's true, and, and I think I'm gonna run for office, and so the voice of people can matter every single day. And so just being involved is what we got, just being involved is what me, what led me to run for the office.
And even though we might kind of think of politics, you know, that's what we see on TV and DC, all the big names, local politics is really where the rubber meets the road, and it's where you can really affect change, so.
Yeah, I agree. And I can be, you know, the one thing I can be kind of defensive about is people kind of just trashing politicians. Because I think, you know, when people think of politicians, they think of the 535 people who sit in Washington DC. But there are people on school boards and city councils and town councils, you know, tens of thousands of people all across this country who were getting up and doing hard policy work every day for sometimes little, sometimes even no money, because they just care about the community. So I really do see this as public service that I am very blessed to do. And, and I get it, the politicians get like a rap like, you know, a, a used car salesman. And I get it, but it's also tough, because I know a lot of people who are in public service in this arena who do it for right reasons and really care about the people they're serving.
Yeah. Okay, Loudoun County has seen an immense population growth in the last few years, since 2010 especially. Now it's over 400,000 residents, and making it the fastest-growing county in Virginia, and actually also one of the fastest-growing counties in the United States. Luckily, the economy is also growing steadily. So what challenges does that pose for the Board and your ability to connect with your constituents?
Oh, that's such a great question. That's a really good question. So yeah, Loudoun County is, we grow by about thirty-three people a day in Loudoun County. We are the fastest-growing county in Virginia. We are the fastest-growing county in the country of counties, over 250,000 people. And we're normally one of the twentieth fastest-growing counties in the country as well. So the biggest challenge is the one thing people don't want, and that is, we need more houses in Loudoun. And no one wants to hear that. No one wants to hear that. And we get yelled at all the time, and we get accused of taking under-the-table money and all those. And I always joke that I drive a Hyundai. If I took all the under-the-table money people said I took, I would at least be driving a Bentley by now or something. So we need houses, and we need to put them in the right places, and we need to talk to the public before we do, and make sure the right types of homes. But, but, you know, I said before, you know, if you wanna have an economy where your teachers can live and where your server who served you at your restaurant can live, and where your firefighters live, you have to build houses. We need, we need workforce housing, we need disability housing, we need affordable housing, we need the whole planet plea of housing, and it's really a hard conversation when, you know, people read that the Board's going to build 1,000 more homes or 300 more homes. I mean, we get, we just get like landed on. But the truth is, and I always say, listen, somebody fought against every house that's here right now. And at one point, Loudoun County had 20,000 people, 50,000 people, 90,000 people, but people kept coming because we kept building houses, and so people live here. So I always think, well, somebody fought against your house one day, long ago too. So that's one of the biggest struggles, is explaining that housing is needed. Housing is needed to support the economy, housing is needed to support retail. We have, we have one of our malls, our only large mall, is not always doing very well. And it's because we don't have enough rooftops, right? We have to have rooftops to, to support the retail, to support the restaurants, to support the economy. And so that's a big challenge. You know, you wanna put them in the right places, you want to have the right types of homes. You don't, they don't belong everywhere, but having the housing discussion with my constituents is a hard discussion to have, and one that is most challenging. And I've never had a housing application where people come to the Board and say, "Absolutely, we welcome new neighbors. Put those houses down." That never, ever happens. And so when we vote for the houses, we get, well, you didn't listen to us. Well, if I listened to people about this, we'd never build another house in Loudoun County. And so I hear two things. We don't want any houses, but I also wanna affordable house for my son to live in, right? And so it's like, you can't have both those things. Yeah. You got to, you can't have both those things. So that's one of the harder conversations that I have.
But it seems like you are well-prepared for those conversations.
I hope so.
Yes. What does a typical work, typical day at work look like for you?
That's a hard question. I don't know if I have typical days. I, I, you know, when I, when I was elected, I left my career of being a therapist, because this is a full-time job. And, and I thought that if I was going to do it and do it well, I, I had to do it full-time. So I left my career, and I do this, this is my, this is my full-time job. And so I usually arrive, I'm not a morning person, not a morning person. So I usually arrive at work somewhere between nine and ten. And on a meeting day, which we have, I have a month between regional meetings and board meetings. I have like seven meetings a month. On a meeting day, I'll start off at ten in the morning, and if I leave by midnight, that's, that's pretty normal. That's pretty normal. On a non-meeting day, I'll start off at nine, ten in the morning, and I usually leave by seven or eight at night, somewhere like that. I'm really working on keeping my Sundays clear. I, I have found that this job is pretty all-encompassing, and you can work 24/7 if you let yourself. But I'm really working on having better self-care and not working on, on Sundays. But my days are really, really very busy, and surprisingly, I'm busier in COVID. I don't, I mean, I, I'm surprised by that. I don't know why, but I'm even busier since we've been in COVID. And so between taking regional meetings, taking county meetings, I try to talk to schools and young people whenever I can, and as, as often as possible. I also sit on a couple of national boards. Through the National Association of Counties, I sit on some national boards that has to do with county issues. And so staff meetings are pretty often, you know, meeting about applications, zoning, regulations, land use, all those types of things. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty busy actually, but I really, really enjoy the work. And it's, it's challenging, but it's challenging in all the right ways. And so I feel, I feel really grateful to be in the position. It's, it's, it's challenging, but it's also really fun, and it's very satisfying.
That's, that's good to hear. What's your favorite part of being Chair? Is there a favorite part to it?
Yes, yes, young people, young people. I get to meet with kids a lot. And, and there is almost never a time that I get called by a school or a Girl Scout troop or a Boy Scout troop or a church group or whatever, that I don't say yes. And, and that is because, you know, just as I know that, you know, that all the women that came before me and all the people of color that came before me, and all people that just worked really hard and came before me and put me in this, in this position, if I'm gonna pay it forward, I have to do the same thing for, to kids who are coming up. And so if I get a phone call or a request to meet with even one young person, I do that. You know, if I, if I in this job build roads and move buses and build schools and get traffic movement, if I do all that, if I do all that, lower taxes, if I do all that, that's, that's great. But if I have not positively impacted the lives of the people who are coming before me, some young girl sitting at home right now, then I undo, then I failed at the position, then I have failed. Because it can't just be about the roads we build or the buildings we build. It has to be about the people that we build. And if I don't do that, then I've not done my job well. And so my most, the thing I enjoy the most is meeting with young people. So anywhere from, usually, not, not so much tiny little people, because tiny little people are, are sticky and don't pay attention, but that middle school, middle school is my sweet spot, middle school, high school, young adults, that, that area right there is where I just spend a lot of time and, and clear my schedule to make time.
That's fantastic. It's very important to be in touch and really inspire the next generation as well. Can you share the best professional advice or advice in general that you've been given, and who gave you that advice?
Well, that's a, that's a hard question. I, I get advice all the time. So I think the best advice I've been given is just advice for life. And it's, and it was given to me by my grandmother, and, and she said to all of her granddaughters, "Every once in a while, take the biggest piece of meat for yourself," right? And what she meant was, and for people of her, her age group, my grandmother's not with us anymore, you make the, make food for your family, and you would make the plate of your husband's and your children. And then almost what was left over, you take for yourself. And she said, "Every once in a while, make your own plate first," right? Fix your own plate first, and if you want that, that piece of, that, that breast, that piece of chicken breast, you take that first. And because, you know, women just, we are people who, we take care of our families, we take care of our children and our parents, we take care of our, of our community, we take care of our churches, we take care of our schools, and we pour out and pour out and pour out. And at some point, you don't have enough anymore to give yourself. And the analogy I give is, when you're on, when you're taking a plane ride, and they give you those instructions before you start, they say, "In the event of an emergency, put your own oxygen mask on first, and then put the mask on on the person next to you." And that is because if you don't have air, if you pass out, then you can't help the person next to you. So I would say to women, you know, just by our very nature, we're gonna be givers. I don't have to tell a woman to go give more, but women, just by our natures, do not make our own plate first. We do not put our own oxygen mask on first. We do not do that stuff for ourselves. And so I think the best piece of advice I can give, no matter what you're doing in the professional world, as a homemaker, in your church, in your community, in your schools, is you've got, you have got to do good self-care. You just have to. Finally, I would say, it is okay, women, to, to brag on ourselves every once in a while. We don't do that either. If someone, if you ask most women, what don't you like about yourself? We don't do that either. If someone, if you ask most women, what don't you like about yourself? In, in, in three minutes, we can name ten things. And then you say what like, what do you like about yourself? We can't do that. And then if we say it, somebody will say, oh, you're conceited, you're stuck up. So why can't we say negative things about ourselves, but it's not okay to say positive things about ourselves? What is that? And so I would say just overall, give yourselves a break. Women, give yourselves a break. You're doing the best you can. You're probably doing a phenomenal job. So no matter what industry you're working in, no matter what area you're working in, that would might be, that might be, be my advice for my, for my fellow sisters out there.
Very nice, beautifully put and definitely very important advice that I think is also easy to remember with the analogies that you gave you. You already kind of said, especially women sometimes have maybe a problem with promoting themselves or speaking up. Do you have any suggestions on how they can develop a little more confidence maybe in speaking up?
So there's something that I have been, that I've noticed and that I've been working on and it's really, really, really uncomfortable, but I've been doing it. As women, we will say something. And then five minutes later, a man will say the same thing and maybe change a word or two here and there. And everyone acts like that man just invented water, right? It's like, oh my God, what a great idea. And so for all my life, I would say, it doesn't matter who gets the, the credit. It doesn't matter if he said it. As long as stuff, this gets done, it doesn't matter. I've stopped that to some degree. So now you will hear me say, yeah, that's a good idea, but I said it first and it's really uncomfortable. It's really uncomfortable to do that. But women often and almost always give away our shine, right? We give it away. We, you know, we give away credit to somebody else. And so I think we have to stop doing that. I'll tell you a really quick story. When I was running for office, um, the first, the, for chair, the first time, I was at a debate and my, my three opponents were all men. And one was the chair of the board. His name was Scott York and the other one was named Charlie King and one was named Tom Belanca. And we're in a debate and I was listening to them and as they were talking to one another, they were talk, calling each other by their surname. So they would refer to each other as Chairman York and Mr. King and Mr. Belanca, but they were all calling me Phyllis. And I remember, I remember sitting there at the debate and, and thinking, as the debate's happening, I heard it and I thought, don't say anything, just don't say anything. This is not a big deal. Just don't say anything. And about halfway through the debate, I thought, I can't, like my, my, my head is going to explode. So a question was asked of me and I stood up and I said in a very calm voice, if he's Mr. York and he's Mr. King and he's Mr. Belanca, I'm not Phyllis, I'm Miss Randall. And then I answered the question. And I remember when I said it, like the whole room just got really quiet and I was like, oh, this is going to be bad. This is going to be so bad. And the next day, the, the papers printed it and all these women emailed me and sent me stuff to say, good, yes, like yes, that's ju, exactly. And I, I, it was such, such a shocking moment because I was so hesitant to do it, to say it. But then after I said it, all the women's in the audience said to me, we noticed that too. And I thought, really? Uh, cause I thought no one noticed it with me. And they said, we noticed it too. And by the way, thank you for saying something. And it was really, at the moment was interesting because two of my three opponents, um, not Mr. King, but my other two opponents kind of mocked me after that for the whole debate. They just kind of mocked me. Mr. King was actually very, very, very respectful to me, but my other two opponents kind of mocked me. And I remember it was just, it was such an uncomfortable moment for me. But I also knew that, that, that what, what I was hearing wasn't right. So sometimes even when it's uncomfortable and it will be, you just gotta, you just gotta speak up for yourself. You just gotta do it. And you know, it, it, it can feel weird, but the truth is I knew that if I left that debate having not said something, I would have never forgiven myself and it would just sort of always stayed with me.
Thank you for sharing that story. I think that really kind of illustrates the problem or what a lot of women kind of uh, deal with or encounter.
Yeah.
Running a little over time, I do have a couple more questions. I hope you will.
I think I have time for two more questions.
All right, then let's go with, you already kind of talked about taking care of oneself is very important, especially in this time as well. So what's your best way to clear your head or to recharge?
So one, you know, I like people. COVID has been very hard for all of us extroverts, right? I mean, it's been very hard for a lot of reasons. Obvious, obviously we've had in Loudoun County as, as of this morning, two hundred and sixty-six of our Loudoun County friends and neighbors have, have died from COVID. But you know, uh, uh, so that's obvious, the biggest thing, the sickness and the death, but it's also been hard for people who just recharge with other people. And so it's been really, really tough for me to, um, because I, I just, I need, I need people to be around me. So that's been tough. And so finding ways to connect with people. I also will say that for me, every once in a while, and this is going to sound strange, I take a bath, right? I take a shower every day. Let's be clear about that. Every once in a while, take a bath, take a bath, take a long bath. Don't worry about the fact that, you know, the bathtub's taking a lot of water. Put on some, put on some good jazz music, light some candles. I take care of myself by sometimes going, I have been, I've been stressed, I've been, you know, I, I am on the dais sometimes. On some days, either here or regionally or nationally, I am on the dais easily for, for nights a week, on a regular basis, four nights a week. And so I will, one, set Sunday aside for my family, for my faith. But two, also on Sunday nights, I'll take a bath. I'll get a good book and I'll read and I would do that and kind of, and, and, and I said to my husband and to my chief of staff, unless the county's on fire, do not bother me right now. Like, let me do this for myself. So I think everyone should find out what works best for them and then make that time sacrosanct. Like literally schedule in your schedule, time down for yourself. Because if you don't do it in your schedule, something, you're going to put something else in your schedule, put something else over that. Also, I have good girlfriends and good friends. And I surround myself with, 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 you know, people who are not so much, you know, gonna, you know, gonna tell me what I want to hear, but just good friends. And so these are hard jobs and when you're an elected official, you are going to get criticized. People have the right to criticize you. You run for the office knowing that you're going to get criticized. It's expected and it's, and it's the right of every constituent. It doesn't mean that after a while, it doesn't feel heavy, right? Sometimes when you're doing your best and you're getting a lot of just kind of just thing, you know, just people just, it feels heavy, it feels hard. And so I try to have some time with my girlfriends. My, you know, girlfriends that I've had for years and years and years. I, I joked, my girlfriends who were my girlfriends when I was losing office, when I lost my office, offices. When I was losing campaigns, I recharge with them sometimes. I go out with them. I have a good time. So I call my two best friends, I call my family. So surround yourself with people who are going to, who are going to take care of your spirit and your soul. Because in our jobs, in our lives, sometimes our spirits and our souls can take a beating. So surround yourself with people who, who are going to, who, who believe your spirit and your soul is important and will speak into your life in those ways.
Yeah. Very good advice, very important. Have a support system and make sure that we also build in some pauses in our schedule.
Yeah.
Kind of come down. All right, the last one then, since you already kind of brought it up, you said kind of like to take up a book and read something. So do you have like a favorite book? And also what's the last book that you read or that you're reading right now?
So I have, I, so I have favorite authors. I like Toni Morrison a lot. When I want something that's kind of introspective and deep to read. When I want an easy, fast, flimsy, who cares read, I would pick up a Daniel Steele novel and, and polish that off in, in, in a weekend because I mean, they're, you know, they're not, they're, they're Daniel Steele novels. And so they're fun just to, just to read. My favorite book is a book called by Toni Morrison called The Bluest Eye, amazing book. But the, the book I read most, uh, most recently was a book called We Were the Lucky Ones. It was about a, a whole family that survived the, the World War Two and the concentration camps in different ways and not knowing if each other had lived until they got to the end of the war. It turned out they all lived, but some of them actually went to camp to the, to concentration camps and were almost killed. Some got out and lived a fairly benign life. And so it's called We Were the Lucky Ones. It's a fascinating book. I, I tend to be drawn to history, historical novels, especially if it's World War Two or the Civil War, those, those two are the things that I am drawn to very often, World War Two and the Civil War historical novels. I'm also for, for, because I grew up in Colorado. I am a huge Titanic buff. Because in Colorado, Molly Brown lives in, in Colorado, so the Molly Brown House. And so when you grow up in Denver and you go to Molly Brown House, because I can tell you everything about the Titanic you ever want to know, ever. So, so any Titanic book I will read, uh, anytime. So, but I love, I love reading for pleasure. When you, when you work this job, you don't get to read for pleasure very much. And so those Sundays in the bathtub are really important that I read for pleasure. But I do often, but especially historical novels is what I really enjoy reading.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. And like you said, you know, we really kind of get to see like different worlds through, through an author's eye. And when some history comes in, it's very, very interesting. Toni Morrison, and like you said, The Blue Eye really was important to her when she wrote it because she did not have any books where she would see herself. So.
And The Blue Eye wasn't an easy read, right? So I read The Blue Eye like, and then I read it and then I read it again. Right? Cause Toni Morrison books are not easy reads, you know, so you, you, you know, you, you read a, you read a page and then you go, wait a minute, and you go back and read that page again. So and they can be heavy books, but, but, but so important. Daniel Steele is different. Her books are, you know, they're, they're much lighter. Although there is a book from Daniel Steele called Zoya, which is, which is a historical novel about the Romanoff family. It's really, really, my favorite Daniel Steele book is called Zoya. It's just, it's a great book. It's about the Romanoff family.
Well, those are some really good tips. So I hope our audience will take some of your reading tips to heart. Because we are ready to support the two here at the library. And I could talk with you for at least another hour about all this.
One question I have, your, your accent is absolutely beautiful. Where are you from?
Thank you. I'm from Germany. I figured you might kind of latch on to that. Stuttgart.
Yep, cause you know, I thought it was Germany. I was born in Stuttgart. My father was military, I was born in Stuttgart. We went, I went to Germany three years ago to the Rhine region. Oh my God, it was beautiful, beautiful. I had such a great time. And I ate so much food. I came back from Germany like seven pounds heavier. No kidding. I was like, so much food. And for the first time ever in Germany, I ate white asparagus. Huh. Absolutely amazing.
Glad you had a good time there.
I had a great time.
It's a great place to visit and I miss the food too.
Sure you do. I'm sure you do.
Okay, Chair Randall, I really enjoyed talking with you today. Really appreciate that you took the time to sit down with us. It's been such a pleasure to talk with you about your experience and hear some of your advice. I think if somebody would like to get in touch, they can always email and one.
Please do, please do. Yeah, please do. phyllis.randall@loudon.gov. For any reason at all, please email me. I get lots of emails and we try. My staff, I only have a staff of of three point two five people with a county of four hundred and twenty-five thousand people. So we have, you know, if we missed your email, we apologize. And so just send it again because we really try to answer all the emails we get. But we get probably between three and six hundred emails a day. So we really try to keep them all up. But if we do miss them, we will try to get back to you. Well, we have, we get that many in COVID. We don't normally get that many. In COVID, we've gotten that many emails a day.
Well, thank you very much for the very important work that you do. And best of luck, best wishes for you for the future and again, thank you.
I really enjoyed myself very much. Thanks so, thanks so much. And hopefully we will see one another in person without mask in the next four or five months with COVID will be, will be, will be past us. So thank you for having me today.
That would be fantastic. Yeah. Thank you very much, Chair Randall.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. It has been an immense pleasure to talk with Phyllis Randall, Chair of the Board of Supervisors in Loudoun County. Please join us for a conversation with Dr. Enkress, President of Northern Virginia Community College next Thursday. Same time, same place. And eventually you will also be able to see all the interviews with the featured speakers of the series on the Loudoun County Public Libraries YouTube channel. Thank you for today. Have a great day and goodbye.